Chicken coops. I got a request from, if we can have somebody from the manager's office. The ordinance, Tommy is extremely familiar with it. The ordinance. I don't think it deals with institutions like a school wanting to have a chicken coop. And so there, I was contacted by Norfolk Collegiate School. Their headmaster wants to, at the lower school on Towater Drive, wants to be able to do some kind of...
Schools, Norfolk Collegiate?
Some kind of farm-to-table, but not eat the chicken, but you want to have the eggs. So I was told to make sure I express that appropriately. And so what they're looking for is, they want the kids to understand that. And so if the ordinance doesn't cover it, they've approached once and they were rejected with several issues that, of course, they can't meet because it's not residential. That being said, if we can have somebody from the manager's office or from the appropriate department meet with them and let's come up with a solution. So when we do have institutions that wish, especially of learning, that wish to be able to use farm-to-table issues, that they can raise those appropriately and still not break the law. So if we can have somebody from your office contact them, probably winter would be best, and begin the process of either a special exception or an ordinance that would meet that for an institution, especially for education, is what I'm looking at.
It is currently allowed at industrial, so if it's property zone industrial.
Well, they were shut down a couple times in a couple ways. So I think that we need to see how we can make it happen versus telling somebody, "You can't do it." We need to find a way to tell the citizen, "We can do it." And that's what I'm asking you to do. And also, I would like an update on where Waterside is now. I'd like to know where the, I understand the permits are pulled, but I would like more than just a verbal discussion. I would like either Mr. Hen here, who represents Cordish, or I want photographs of what's been done and presented to us so that we can inquire as to the present status. I'd also like to know where they are with regard to their timeline. And add on to that where we are, if you can present to us with the marine at that point.
I'd like to hear what store firm business is too, because we were supposed to have the announcement.
Okay. And right now, I believe, Paul, that's all I have. I may have something else by the time you ask.
Mr. Riddick?
Yeah. Couple things. Lighting on Church Street from Princess Anne Road, and this would be on the east side of Church Street from Princess Anne Road, up to Golf Street. We had had the problem going down further on Church Street where the lights were out, but one of the ladies who comes to the pool in the morning mentioned the fact that Princess Anne Road to Golf, the lights are out. I do know, it's also on Virginia Beach Boulevard on the side of Booger T. Washington High School. It's very, very dark there, you know? And I, you know, I don't know how we, I know we just did a, we did some upgrading in Huntersville as far as lighting is concerned, but I think we need to look around and see, you know, how light we are, how dark we are in certain portions, especially when we're talking about around schools like Booger T. where it could be a haven for crime and things like that. Also, I mentioned to Marcus last week about parking on Church Street. We have the Maplewood Plaza, which will be opening next spring. And the parking I'm speaking of is just like Collie Avenue. You know, whatever the timeframe is, you know, on one side of the street after 9:30, you can park until 4:00 on both sides of Church Street. And that would enhance the business of Maplewood Plaza. And it would also slow the traffic down tremendously. And I would like for this to come in the form of an ordinance between now and the time that we open at Maplewood Plaza. And it's very important that we have parking on Church Street. I know we had talked about it several, several, several years ago, but now we have businesses. And I'm talking from Princess Anne Road to B. Avenue. That's all I have.
I don't have anything.
Okay. I'm gonna let Andy have the rest of my time.
Amy, we passed an ordinance last time that he can't do that.
Mr. Riddick, the lighting, especially on Princess Anne Road up by Booger T., it is a great concern. So I mentioned it to Mr. James Rogers as well, if we could take a look at it and some other areas in that surrounding community right there on Virginia Beach Boulevard and Princess Anne Road, especially by Booger T. Washington, going back towards the track as well, because it is extremely dark on Booger T. Washington High School's property. It's, the lighting isn't good at all. So that was one of the concerns that I have. Also, I want to say thank you to the Norfolk Police Department, especially Chief Goldsmith and Assistant Chief Boone. There seems to be a great concern, what are they called, ATVs, driving within the communities on sidewalks and streets speeding within the community. And this isn't just one or two ATVs. There is a number, as large as 15 of them at one time, going through communities and on persons' properties, you know, back behind their houses, sidewalks, you know, just really scaring a lot of our senior citizens as well. So thank you to the Norfolk Police Department for helping me out with that. But can we possibly look into exactly what's going on and what the ordinance are for these ATVs?
Can we get an update from Norfolk State University on how many students they gave scholarships to with the money that we gave them? We gave them that money for scholarships, so how many students we gave that money and possibly like what their majors are maybe? And then also, can we look at putting more, another $100,000 into the budget for Norfolk State for next year in our upcoming budget for scholarships as well? But I would like to know, you know, how many students benefited from that money? And then can we get an update on the cigar factory building and what those issues are? And then the last thing is, there's a bus stop that Hollywood Homes in Maple Hills neighborhood brought to our attention that's at the corner of Newtown Road and Virginia Beach Boulevard. And it creates somewhat of a traffic cluster there because it's right there either at the 7-Eleven or the Captain D.'s. And the recommendation is simply to push it back to the feeder lane. And the bus can come over on the feeder lane, collect the passengers, and then go on and merge with the traffic and make its turn or keep straight or whatever. I know we talked about the feeder lane kind of going away at some point, but it, with it being right there at the light, it creates a traffic cluster when it's rush hour in the morning and in the afternoon. Yeah.
Brett has a list of the students who got the scholarships.
Oh, okay.
It was either 20 or 30 that sent it to us. But I also agree we should try to give them another 100.
Okay.
Twenty-eight?
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight.
About $1,000 each.
Thank you.
We gave him 100.
100,000.
Then we also, in last year's budget, there was more money. We weren't giving them the two shots.
Really?
Yeah.
It was about 75,000 in this year's budget.
Right.
After the 100,000 for first time.
They're in good shape. They probably got about 150, they said, no.
I think the manager did what we want. He put it in the budget.
Right. Let's file up on the president, I'm gonna tell him to tighten up.
Tom?
Also, some HRT issues. The administration at Northside and some parents contacted me about the HRT bus stop that's actually located on school property, and they've asked it to be moved off of school property because there's people who use that bus stop that smoke in the morning when kids are coming into school, and it's actually on school property. So they just asked if it could be moved down a block off of the property. In addition, HRT is still, I think we're going on almost three or four years that I've been complaining about trash at the bus stops. I don't know who they're using, who their management company is that does that, but they are not emptying those bins fast enough. And so it's overflowing and it's causing litter to blow everywhere, particularly if their bus stops are located by like 7-Elevens or other convenience stores where they go, people will go in, eat, and then they throw it away. There's trash all over Little Creek Road over by Old Oceanview Avenue, that bus stop. Evelyn T. Butts, that intersection there, I know some of you are familiar back there, always full of trash. In fact, we put our own Environmental Protection Agency put, Environmental Commission put bins out there, and we're not even emptying those bins fast enough, the green cans, because they're always overflowing and there's just trash everywhere. I think we really need at some point to have a bigger conversation with HRT. I had suggested that our city services, if we're going by some of these, could pick up the trash. I think the last time I looked, it's a guy that drives around in a pickup truck, empties those and throws them in the back of his truck. So I don't know who HRT is using, but it's just not getting done fast enough, and especially some of the busier ones. And it's causing litter in those areas. It just doesn't look good, and it puts a stigma back on bus riding, you know, that these are dirty places to be. And, you know, people who ride the bus, when we know there's a lot of citizens who rely on it, they deserve a clean place as well.
We have HRT right back here listening, right? Correct, Ray?
Oh, there you go. I didn't even know you was here. And then this is a letter from our Urban Crescent. I traveled up with Courtney Doyle and Brian Pennington, representing the city, at this Urban Crescent meeting, which, if you recall, years ago, they did an Urban Crescent meeting for transportation, and it ended up with the resolve, the tax increase to support transportation so, and some other organizational things. This is an effort to kind of do the same thing with education, and we were represented there, sat next to Virginia Beach's superintendent and school board members. It was a great event of about 150 elected official school board members from across the Urban Crescent. This is the final, is it final, Brian?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, final draft letter that will be going to the governor, and then they'll working through the HRPDC. There'll be some media to try to get citizens involved in this, in funding education, doing the, the state needs to know, well, we all know they're not doing their share, but we really want to hammer them on this and try to bring some more attention to the funding crisis in education. So one of my requests is the mayor to sign this letter to go up, and then your assistance with getting this out, once we get the final letter, making sure that this goes out. And Brian, I believe they're going to open this up beyond signatures just of mayors. I think the initial push is mayors, school board chairs, and the CEOs of chambers of commerce, but I think they're gonna try to get more, even more signatures as it goes forward.
We are, for the direction of leadership of the Crescent, we're developing a template letter that can be shared with nonprofits and individuals who might be interested in the issue so they can send it to the general sum of members and the governor, regrading the points that were raised in the letter that changed out.
And I just want to add, to end this, is that just, one of the things we wanted to remind them of, that Virginia is in the top 10 in both per capita and median household income, but in the bottom 10 for their support for public education. And believe it or not, that wasn't always the case. Virginia used to be ranked in the top 10 for funding schools, probably in the mid-2000s, and then with the recession and changeover and politics in Richmond, it's dramatically decreased. So we were making that point. Any effort that we can do, I think Norfolk's always looked at as a leader in this, kind of, these kind of initiatives, would be great to help with getting that information out. And also, for those of you who are running for reelection, it helps with pointing out our lack of education funding is from the state, not from locality.
Could you repeat that, Tom?
Just one thing, Tommy, we're gonna walk on this ordinance, which has the schedules for the city council meetings for 2016. Rex says you've all seen it.
Paul, there's an issue I could raise with that. Keep in mind that there are, at this table, you have three of us who are up for election right now. You have, we have night meetings every time. We're missing every Tuesday opportunity to go to civic leagues. If we can revisit that as we move into the new year, because what's happening is, is that we're invited to civic leagues that meet on Tuesday nights, and we just, we can't go. And that's their night that they normally meet, their citizens know that. I'm not saying that we need to move every Tuesday to an afternoon meeting, but we are, people want to hear from us, and it's very difficult to always tell them, "I'm sorry, we can't be there," because we're always meeting too.
Mark Ruby just doesn't go.
You know, the civic leagues that meet on Tuesdays, they know where we meet. Huntersville is one in particular that meets on Tuesday. We suggested, at least I did, that they change it so that we could attend, but they refused to change it, so.
West gets changed there.
West gets changed.
Yeah. So let those civic leagues accept this.
Our part meets on Tuesday nights.
Laramore Lawns meets tonight. But there's something to be said for that. Historically, we moved to night meetings. I'm not saying that we did it.
You moved it to baton.
I'm not saying we did it wrong, by no means, because it allows more citizens to come downtown. But that being said, I'm gonna ask that we, we need to look at that, because we are being asked to be at civic leagues during the next, during the time period, that perhaps we can move up some of our meetings to allow us to go to those civic leagues at 7:00 o'clock in the evening. Historically, they've been meeting.
They moved their meetings from May. I don't know what's wrong with the rest of you guys.
We'll all rotate around.
I brought up the federal election on the 8th of November.
It's still here.
You want to move it to the...
I was recommending that we move it to the 15th. It's the day before National League of Cities, so I don't, or move it to the 1st, either one. But I was just thinking because I...
Let's do that right now when we go to...
I know the amount of people that come down here.
You guys want to do the 1st or the 15th?
Let's do the 1st.
15th then.
The 1st Tuesday.
We need to have two then.
Laramore Lawns will meet, are you tracking?
29 will be like...
Would you leave that night?
Okay, so it'll be November 15 and 22.
What are we doing?
We're not gonna meet on November the 8th.
So we're doing 1st or 15th?
15th. And I use that term. I want you to notice on June 28th, everybody put a star right there. My last meeting, okay? Mr. Manager, just in case.
They're installing a special chair right next to you there, Paul.
June 28th, my last meeting.
You're gonna be like, like the University of London where they roll them out in a carriage and set them there. Mummified.
On this, I want to go back to this Norfolk State thing right quick. Just with, if they've only done 28 students, $1,000 apiece, that's $28,000. I know they've been working really hard on getting accredited and all that, and I'm glad that they are.
They are credited.
Yeah, I know. I'm saying, I'm glad that they are, but I think they need to work a little bit harder to identify students from Norfolk Public Schools, which is what we gave that money for, even if they're existing students from Norfolk Public Schools who need money, because existing students need money too. So they need to work really hard to spend that money, because they wanted it, and we gave it to them. So they need to work harder to get that money out there to the students so that they can use it, because that's only $28,000 out of 100, 75 grand.
I don't believe with the first 100,000, that the intent was every dollar of that would be for scholarships. I'll go back and see what the...
That's right, some of it was administration.
I think we say at their discretion.
That's right, they were gonna use 40,000 for administrative fees and 60, or they could, they could use it. But, and we gave it to them in September, and so they, school, most of those kids were already, funding was determined, but we ought, they ought to be doing better, I hear you. We ought to get a full report, let's, we want to know.
There's a need there for kids to have money.
If they do use it, I think it should be for scholarships.
Yeah.
Not for administrative, because you don't know, you know...
Yeah, that could be anything.
It could be...
Yeah.
It should be for scholarships.
Yeah, the bulk of that money, not the, not the, not the bulk of it should be for scholarships and not, you know, I mean, $60,000 or $40,000 is a lot of money for their administrative costs.
And any additional money that we give them, I would own as support given if it is strictly scholarships.
Scholarships, yeah.
Okay. Mr. Manager?
So that's what I have. Mayor, the only agenda item that I know that there's a, I guess, requested change is PH7, the Coastal Breeze Car Wash. There was a requirement for 75% of the water to be recycling, and they've asked for 50% and we're fine with that, Mayor. That's the only thing that I know about.
Is this the one on Little Creek?
It's on military circles.
Yeah, it's by military circles.
This is, you can't...
Yeah.
That's, so if there's nothing else, we will go to the downtown transit center. And I, oh, is it, that's you? Okay. And I would say that...
Can I ask you, the lunar development, Valentine, that's been worked through? Has everybody...
That's a bit. The first secretary.
It's two things, is that what everything is?
Two parts to it.
Far up, closest to Church Street, on the street being a bit.
Mayor, Members of Council, this is an update on where we are with the completed downtown Norfolk Transit Center. As a matter of background and reminder, our downtown transit center was on Charlotte Street prior to commercial development that occurred in 2008. We moved it to Cedar Grove. And realizing that Cedar Grove parking lot was not the appropriate place for a transit center, the charge that you gave to the administration in 2012 was to establish a permit, identify a permanent location for a transit center that had dignity, that was highly visible, adjacent to major corridors and assets in the downtown, and that a requirement that HRT, our partner with this, needed a capacity of 50 buses per hour. And so after the site location that we did and working with Tomoff Moss Architects, the design that we developed, we worked with HRT, we were able to secure state funding. Construction is now substantially complete. Randy Thompson was our construction manager. And I'm gonna ask Paul Fillion, who's been our transit construction manager on Light Rail and the InTrak station and on this project, to give you an overview of the new facility. Our temporary location has been in Wood Street, and when this facility opens in January, we will reopen Wood Street to two-way traffic.
One of the things we like to boast about is the walkability and the connections that we have, not only for moving from Wood Street, but with our new center. So we like to boast about our 8, 10, and 12, which is, we're an eight-minute walk from Light Rail Station. We're 10 minutes away from, 10-minute walk to the Greyhound Station, and we're 12 minutes from right here down to connect to Civic Plaza. Some of the highlights I just want to walk you through, basically, we're setting up the 14-bus routes at the new site. They're local routes that, you know, obviously go throughout the region, offer connections, offer connections in the downtown area. The average daily volume is about 5,000 to 6,000 people. About 1,000 people have some kind of business downtown, work home-school, and so we want to get them set up with a nice facility to transfer and another gateway for the city. We also have connections to our max bus routes out to Newport News and the beach, the 960 series. So some of the features, we've got public restrooms, obviously, we've got climate-controlled heat and AC, which is a new, gonna be a new concept for our patrons. Everyone's excited about that. We've got a new customer information center that's gonna be staffed by HRT. So that's brand new, and we're excited about having that convenience to customers so they can help them with their connections, any questions they have for other transit or other needs or wayfinding throughout the city. We've got a break room for the drivers, the HRT drivers. We've got indoor and outdoor seating. We've got a kind of an open, or very open and inviting public plaza. We have the ability to sell tickets. We've got ticket vending machines on the inside of the building as well as the outside.
Will the ticket vending machines be selling tickets to everything?
Yes, yes. So you can get your go-pass for Light Rail bus or ferry. There'll also be hand-ticket sales from the customer service staff inside the building. We've got security cameras set up on both the inside and exterior of the site. We've got bike racks in place. As Ron mentioned, we've got substantial completion, a couple little punch list items from our contractors to finish up. And, you know, we've basically got the walking distance to the various attractions throughout Norfolk. So just a quick view of the site here, we've got basically two platforms, what they call an A and a B. The A basically has 10, 10 bus bays and some room for a layover bus or extra service if we need it. And we've got another four bus bays set up at Platform B. Basically, the bus comes, the bus, majority of the buses will come in off of Bramallton area, Wood Street, and we've added what we call an extension of, sorry, an extension of Posey Lane here to access the platforms. And on your far left is basically would be St. Paul's Boulevard. And the buses are set up to drop, pick up and drop off folks in a kind of counterclockwise fashion so that we're always allowing patrons to access and stay inside those islands or the plaza area. So the building hours are set up, basically, it's pretty early in the morning, the first buses, the high-volume buses are out at 4:30 in the morning. And basically, the, the center will coincide with the HRT's bus route schedules. And from Monday through Saturday, it'll stay from 4:30 a.m. to 2:00 a.m. the following day. Sunday at 6:00 to 2:00. The HRT customer service staffing, which is a booth inside the building, will be staffed 6:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Monday through Friday, and on the weekends, it'll be 8:00 to 5:00. And this is our, this is our starting plan that we've agreed with HRT, that how we want to operate the center.
In looking at, my thought is, is that on a Saturday night, when you close and no one is staffing that from 7:00 to 2:00 a.m., that is just, is there any alternative with Norfolk PD, with private security, anything that you've discussed?
Yeah, we have, we have plans to have security. When the building's open, we have plans to have security in the building. It's just that we anticipate not a whole lot of staff need, support needed on, you know, after peak hours.
I understand, but I, you understand where I'm coming from.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
When you have, also with the hours, are you gonna have, going back to Councilman Smigiel's issue about cleanliness, there's gonna be regular rotation of cleaning in the building and around the grounds throughout the entire day so that it stays?
Yeah, so I'll walk you through the agreements that we have in place. Basically, the city will own the site and retain ownership of the building. We have a lease, it's actually an agenda on this evening for a 25-year lease. The leasing would be responsible for the maintenance of the building, the grounds, the cleanup, you know, cleaning of the restrooms, cleanliness of the plaza, and any, any maintenance that's required, including plowing snow or laying out salt and, you know, keeping it open to the public. So it is spelled out in the lease. Here's a photo of the finished product. It's a view from St. Paul's. We've got a couple of HRT buses. We're not open to the public yet, but we've got some drivers doing some training. It's a nice open plaza, concept of St. Paul's, I'm sure many of you have already seen it. One of the fun projects that we did would, you know, enable to spec out some materials, and a lot of folks don't know this, we pigmented the concrete just to get to a darker feel, so we didn't have the grunge factor. And these are lessons learned of, you know, leaking fluids and things that leak off the bus that basically give a, kind of a, you know, an ugly perception or a used, you know, a used sight when it's brand new. So we're pretty proud of trying something like that. It's a similar spin-off of what we did with Light Rail with the pink tinted concrete. So more fun photos here off of St. Paul's, we're adjacent to Fire Station 1. Can't see it right now, but we've got all kinds of lighting, both down lighting, we've got some plans to revise, some uplighting around the building perimeter. We've got bollards that have lighting, bike racks in place, and new seed, new landscaping along the perimeter. Here's a view from the center itself. We call this the leaf canopy, you've seen that along St. Paul's. There's a, kind of an integrated wall that promotes the plaza concept. And this has a dual function. It retains the site in terms of, you know, keeping it tight and where we want patrons to be, allows it to be open, but at the same time, we eliminate folks wanting to dart across St. Paul's or, you know, get up to the curb and jump, jump the curb. So there was a lot of thought, there was a lot of thought in doing that retainer wall. There's some landscaping in there, and so this is one of the few sections of downtown where you've got a little swerve that you're not walking against the curb to cut through the plaza.
It's gorgeous.
Thank you.
It also looks like a skateboard park.
Yes, we've, we've had skateboarders in there, and it's a sign of a good project when the skateboarders come. So we had our security chase them out of, about a week ago, so. Here's another, here's another view of the center. We've got, HRT's already got their stops and their bay locations up, up in place. You'll see on, posted on the wall. and their bay locations up in place. You'll see on, posted on the wall, or I'm sorry, we integrated that within the, within the building. So we didn't have all these separate Unistrut-type signs running up along the curb, which is a nice feel. You'll see the ticket vending machine there in the center of the screen and HRT drivers in training. Here's another view. You see on the right is the backside of Fire Station One. Gives you an idea what the bus bays look like and the size and scope of the, of the project. We've got outdoor seating. We've got trash, we have recycling bins. We've got some planer walls that also can serve as seating areas if needed. Here's a view of the inside area. It's about sixteen hundred square feet of open space for patrons to get out of the weather. Like I said before, we never had a climate-controlled area to wait for buses. So there's a lot of excitement behind that. In the center of the screen, you see the customer information booth, and behind that are men's and women's restrooms, all ADA handicap compliant, of course. We've got a transit, or a ticket vending machine inside, and we also put one outside in case the center was closed and somebody wanted to buy tickets. So here's another view that shows the connectivity. You've got the Shell Station on the right of the screen, another project that overlapped within Public Works, which was to include pedestrian crossings. So we had safe passage of these, you know, five to six thousand people that come downtown. Another thousand of them are finding their way to various business and locations. We want to have an organized way to cross the street and a safe way to cross the street. So we've got pedestrian crossings in place. And like I mentioned before, it eliminates the need for people to kind of dart out and cross the street at random.
Okay, I have a question. When you're turning in at that, turn in there to the, that's the Texaco or?
Shell Station, right here, yes.
Shell Station, okay, right there. That is a very, I don't know if it's going to be expanded, but that's a narrow space. And then right behind the station, there's a, either a one-way or do-not-enter sign. And I've turned in there, either go into that station, or missing my turn from the McDonald's. And I've seen people, like, because you can come up from the other side, from, what is that, Finn Church?
Finn Church, yes.
You can come up that way from Finn Church Street. So it's almost like a head-on collision waiting to happen because people are coming this way, and then the people turning in are running into a do-not, a one-way or, you know, don't, do-not-enter.
Do-not, right.
I think we've got to figure something out there because to me, it just looks like it's going to, it just, I've seen a couple of...
I agree. I share your concern. It goes outside the scope of the site. We do have, and I'm going to show the slide in a second, we do have an organized patron drop-off and pick-up area, which is actually off Wood Street. But that Shell Station configuration, it does kind of put you towards the back alley, and then there's a lot of islands to sort of jog around. It's just kind of a quirky design with the, between a combination of the McDonald's and the Shell Station. But again, it got outside, it got outside the perimeter.
And we know they're always paying attention, and they're always doing what they're supposed to be doing. But, I mean, yeah.
Something will, my internal will come up with some ideas as we go move forward. Here's the, here's the backside of the Transit Center. And part of our public meetings, we had, it was a very good point that a lot of folks had brought up, that they wanted the backside, I call it the backside of the front side. We wanted both sides of the Transit Center to be inviting as a gateway. So we didn't want to look like a back alley where you're coming in off the bus. So it's another gateway, and it's, just shows you the scope and magnitude of the size of the site. But it's, it's pretty impressive when you come in off this section of Posey Lane that we extended, which is right here, a brand-new, brand-new driveway that connects into Wood Street. And you see the Shell Station and the new Transit Center in the background. Here's our shared park-and-ride, which is, we call it a park-ride, similar to Light Rail. It's predominantly going to be used for HRT staffing. So when they have drivers changing shifts, they can leave their personal vehicle there and hop in a bus that's already waiting in the center. We've got extra parking for HRT maintenance, any contractors that they need to park their patron drop-off, you know, typical kiss-and-ride type thing off of Wood Street. And the whole spirit of this parking lot or adjacent use was to keep the vehicular traffic outside the bus loop. We want the buses just in there, no other type of vehicles, you know, so they're not interfering with the transfer operations.
How are you going to, yeah, how are you going to regulate that?
It's signed in there. It's signed, basically, we have a do-not-enter on one side, and we have a, it'll be signed for HRT buses only and organized.
And the parking spaces are metered, right?
The parking spaces are not metered. This is something that we'll have to monitor to make sure that, you know, appropriate folks are parking in there and using HRT facilities only. It'll be signed appropriately for that, too.
If it's your employees, you can always use a tag.
Yeah, HRT employees, staffs plan on using a hang tag in their vehicles.
So if that's the case, and there are others that are, that are legal park-and-ride, then they can always be issued an appropriate tag.
Yes.
But you're going to have to patrol that accordingly, because otherwise, you're going to have people cheating the system to use that for free parking.
And as well as the trash cleanup and the maintenance and everything else they want to, good impression of the building. So again, the total project was six point seven million dollars. We had help from HRT and our Department of Rail and Public Transportation, offering two point seven million dollars' worth of grant money.
Can I make, I'm sorry.
Sure.
Can I make a suggestion to follow up with what you, what you just said? And when people are parking and riding, they have to purchase a ticket somewhere. So I don't know if it's possible in the software of where they're purchasing their ticket. But I know in some other areas, if you park, you can purchase your parking ticket and you pay, and then you put that ticket in your window. So there may be a way in the software where people are purchasing their ticket that we can ask them, are you parking your car? And if the answer is yes, the printout gets, spits out a separate ticket for them to put in the dash of their car. That way, your parking people can tell by the ticket in the dash who's supposed to be in the parking lot. And then initially, we can give out warning tickets like the parking meter people do periodically to people who are not there that would either say, warning, you're not supposed to be here, or if you are and you purchased a ticket, next time, don't forget to put your thing because next time, you'll get a ticket. So that may be something with the people who do the software for the ticket purchase that you, we could inquire about.
I follow. I think that's one of the things that we definitely monitor. We've got staff parking on Wood Street now that we've shared with the St. John's AME Church. We don't anticipate a whole lot of park-and-ride folks because they're already kind of downtown, but it's one of those things that we want to make sure that it's, you know, it's appropriately used. So good suggestion.
People want to see it.
All right. So getting back to the budget, basically, we had two and a half, two point seven million dollars contribution through HRT grants and Department of Rail and Public Transportation. Our current budgets were, city budget, were under four million dollars as we close out the project, and other reimbursements are being finalized. So next steps and upcoming dates, we talked about tonight's...
Oh, how far on this one, Mayor, are we?
Several hundred thousand.
Really?
Yes.
Good for you. Thank you. You're Berkeley.
So some of the...
We'll be buying another traffic signal.
So...
And a roadside drive.
You did well.
This has been Berkeley's best project.
So next ups and upcoming dates, just to refresh your memory here, we've got, we posted a bid for a twenty-five-year term agreement with the new leasing that would maintain the building and the grounds and operate the bus facility. And the bids were, the bids were due, I believe, at seven, seven p.m. tonight. HRT, I know, is one of the bidders. Friday, January eighth of next year, we're planning a ribbon-cutting celebration, and Lori is helping us with the, with the formally invite. So we look forward to having you folks come out and show off the building. And then Sunday, January seventeenth, is a transition from Wood Street, and we're open to the public with HRT operations going a hundred percent. And we'll be ready for that. Wood Street is a temporary site, so we dismantle some of the bus shelters that are in place. We have a temporary restroom there. We're going to relocate, find a home for that, repurpose that. And then Wood Street goes back to two-way, two-way vehicular traffic for all vehicles. Right now, we're just using it for bus only and for fire rescue. So that's all I had, if there's any questions.
And this lease, that just, we're basically giving it to them, but they agree to maintain it.
They have the day-to-day maintenance, and we keep the capo maintenance roof and things like that.
What is, can I ask a question? With regard to, I had, I go to Court in Hampton, and sometimes I walk through that facility near the courthouse in Hampton. And there have been times in the past that Hampton, similar facility, not as attractive at all, was in, not necessarily in disrepair, but it was not, it was not well-kept. You could walk in and smell urine, and it was most inappropriate. And most riders never sat inside the facility. They were always outside because they couldn't stomach being entered.
Excuse me, where is this?
Hampton, downtown Hampton. I understand that would be an HRT facility, am I correct?
Yes.
With the understanding you would agree with me that that facility is not appropriate or has not in the past been appropriate. Have you changed that facility?
At Hampton?
Yes.
I'm, no, I work for the city in Norfolk, so Ray Marusi's here to make...
Ray, could you let us know?
He might be able to help you.
And the reason I'm asking the question is that I've seen, if HRT is running that facility in Hampton, I've seen it in its worst condition, which happened to be its daily condition. And my fear is, is that this facility will end up like that. Have you fixed your Hampton facility?
We have, Councilman. We have issues with HTC, the Hampton Transit Facility, recompeted for a contractor to maintain, to do everything, cleanliness with contract services. And we had obtained a new contractor to take care of that, and the requirement for keeping that facility clean, in a clean condition, has stepped up in terms of how many times during the day we go in and clean bathrooms and facilities. It's an older facility.
It is?
It has some issues with its plumbing, and oftentimes making backup. That, too.
It wasn't staffed last time. Is it staffed now in Hampton?
Hampton, HTC is staffed, not for the entire time, but we do have customer service reps. And then again, we have executive officers that go through there, and customer service reps are not there.
Well, and the reason I ask is that we only understand what historically we know. And historically, that was a very poor-run facility. So that being said, is that if that, if that is any idea of how we're going to end up here, we're going to have some very serious problems.
That is not the idea of ours, going to end up here. At least, very clear with the expectations of the cleanliness, pressure removal, cleanliness in the bathrooms. HRT tests means exactly what it was called for.
Let's make it happen, right? Great.
It'll be a happy day when we cut that rep. Yes.
It's a beautiful facility. It's absolutely gorgeous. It's a work of art.
We're going to show a statue of Marcus up there.
Well, you know, it lends a sense of dignity to, to the folks who use, and it's respectful to the folks who use public transit. It's something they've not had in the transfer station here in a long, long time.
That's a beautiful, beautiful.
Yeah, but that's okay.
Sabrina, before you begin, can I ask you another question about an agenda item? An agenda item, the gem lots?
Yes.
And...
The...
And then what?
No, no, no. We're selling some gem lots.
Yes.
What does Sabrina do with the money?
We don't get money from them.
Well, it's about seventy or eighty thousand dollars, I mean, in tonight's agenda. It should go into revolving loan, revolving real estate account. Why doesn't it?
I think it goes into just general fund revenue.
That's what I thought. You're just snacking. It ought to, you know, shouldn't it?
It is going to be a problem.
Yeah. So you're exactly right, Mayor. We've moved from the little parcels that were just slivers, but now we're moving to buildable lots. So we're in the second phase where we're with gem lots, and we can, that's the will of the council to move all that into the land acquisition law, and that would make sense.
I think that makes sense.
Can I ask?
Then we can, you know, do things with it. Sabrina's doing things with it. We'd want to do things with it.
Carry forward into the next year.
Well, other ones...
I know you carry it, but that's one-time money. That ought to go, that one-time real estate sale of money should go in the revolving account.
Can I ask a parliamentary procedure on that? Can we merge those gem lots, public hearings together if there's no comments on them? I know you can do it with resolutions, but can we do it with public hearings?
We did it with the...
We've done it?
I thought we'd done it before with gem lots.
We did it with refunds.
Refunds are resolutions. These are public hearings, which, but if there's nobody making specific comments on it, can they be in the one?
You've got a requirement of a public hearing prior to the disposition?
For each one.
For each one. Are there different terms? And so that, in theory, anybody could appear and say, I'd like to speak about that, so that it would save you a little bit of time. But I do not think it's the most defensible practice, and you have buyers who want to be able to rely that it's all been done properly.
I didn't ask. We wouldn't have been able to figure out the other margin before.
So just try.
We're going to go about fifty percent.
That's right.
So Mayor members of council, this is just a part two of the discussion that I believe councilmembers, Smigiel and Whibley and Wynn, asked before the end of this year, if we could come back and look at two areas of the city with some projects. And we've been talking about resiliency and visionary and in the future, but the question was, what about now? What are some things that we can, we can do now? So Ron had a presentation last week about the science or the engineering behind some of the projects. And this will be the bookend, which is a discussion about how could you go about funding the projects if you wanted to do them now?
So we, we'll take a moment to talk about what's in the presentation. Again, it's a recap of last week. I'll go over that really quickly. And then we'll focus on funding options. There is no council action at this time. This is just for discussion purposes. So if we look at resiliency, and we are a resilient city, resilience means the capacity of individuals and communities to survive any shocks and stresses that come along and how we deal with them. So as you know, we adopted three goals for, as a resilient city. One is on coastal incentives, which is the coastal community, designing a coastal community for the future. The second is related to economic development, creating opportunities by advancing any efforts to become more sustainable economically. And goal number three is related to our neighborhoods, creating sustainable and healthy neighborhoods. So last week, Ron talked about the capital projects that we were asked to look at. Mainly, it was Hague and Pretty Lake. But then there were some other projects that he also talked about. So with Hague and Pretty Lake, Hague is sixty million dollars, Pretty Lake is fifty million dollars, and those are estimates. So it's a total of one hundred and ten million. When you add the other five projects, it comes up to about three hundred and ten million. So keep in mind, sixty million, fifty million, total of one hundred and ten million, and then the other projects added comes to three ten. So we'll be working with one hundred and ten million and three hundred and ten million throughout the presentation.
Four hundred and twenty, though?
No, no, no.
Total of three hundred and ten?
No, total. We've broken up the presentation.
Okay.
So there is, the simple answer is, there is no simple answer to funding these projects. They're very, they have a high price tag. So how do we get there from here? It's going to have to be a combination of sources and strategies that we achieve. So when we were asked to look at this about a few weeks back, we looked at real estate, what can we do with real estate tax? Can we do a dedicated fee? And we also looked at state and federal. And you heard Ron last week talk about how it's very hard to get federal money, and we've kind of maxed that out. The state has not been very committal in funding any of our projects. So the presentation's designed in a way that it says, if we have to go it alone, what is it going to cost us? So we also looked at some financing tools. We use general obligation bonds for building our city infrastructure. We looked at revenue bonds. And we also looked at cash, which we have none of, and I just lost some again.
We didn't agree to that. That was not agreed upon.
So as you know, and we've talked about this several times, but just as a quick refresher, we have three affordability measures for debt. The first is the Virginia Constitution. That's our legal debt margin. And that is that we can't exceed ten percent of our assessed value of taxable real estate. We're not close to that yet, so we're good. Even though the Constitution says that we can issue ten percent, that is very unaffordable for us. I mean, this, that takes us up to over a billion dollars' worth of debt that we can issue, and there's no way we can afford that. So we look internally, and we set our own debt ratios based on the revenue that we can derive. And we have two internal measures. The first one is the debt service budget shouldn't exceed ten percent of our general fund budget. And then the second one is debt not to exceed three point five percent of our assessed value. So when our property values declined, this ratio really hurt us a lot because there was no way that we could control that. That was all based on assessed values. So based on the FY sixteen approved CIP that you did, we are under our targets. You see that we're starting to crawl up there in the debt service to our expenditure... You see that we're starting to crawl up there in the debt service to our expenditure ratio. But as, if assessed values go up, we get more capacity. So we're at the, we're at the top of the line when you get to 2020. And that's when, I believe, 2017 is when our debt service on our schools start to kick in full, full-fledged. We are one of, we are just one notch away from a triple A rating in all three of our rating agencies. We've also talked about this. SFP upgraded us last time, in 2014, I believe it was, for the first time in 50 years. So we manage our debt with our limited resources very well. But working within our financial limitations, and we passed this out again, and if you look at page 10 and 11 again, it talks about our ability to raise revenue is limited. And our, we are one of the high fiscal stress cities in all of the Commonwealth. We rank number 12. So again, our ability to raise revenue comparable to our other cities is very low. Ranked with us is Portsmouth and Hampton and Newport News, as well as high stress. Even though we have high stress and we have a lot of demand, we have one of the lowest tax rates in the region for the high-stress cities. We have, yes, sir?
But the, the rating agencies, while they look at our revenue and our debt, aren't they also looking at projects? Wouldn't they look at a project such as a resilient project like this, fixing a major flood issue so that we don't have to have future expenses as a positive for a city? I mean, I'm not a financial guy, but I'm assuming that they would, if something like this got funded, and it fixed major flooding issues in the city and protected our resources and our assets, that they would be like, wow, look at what they're doing in their city.
Cost raised the property.
Right.
Right, but that's a future look. They worry about, can we pay our debt now?
And that's not tangible.
Right. And it does come into play later on, much later on, but it is, we do have a high debt burden right now. Moody's has already classified us as having high debt burden. So immediate effect is that if we do this, we may get downgraded if we can't afford it. So the revenue sources have pros and cons. When we looked at the real estate tax, we, if you wanted to increase the real estate tax, we use that to issue general obligation bonds. It's a low-cost way of doing it. We can issue debt with the GO bond very, very low, even compared to the, some of the banks that we can get it from. Cons are that it does affect our debt ratio. It does count against us when we issue, issue a GO bond and use our, our tax revenue to cover it. And we already have very limited capacity in the CIP as it is. Then we looked at making a, making a dedicated fee, somewhat like the DID that you have. We'd have to declare a special services district, and then, you know, maybe do a synthetic TIF or whatever it is, or even establish a real TIF, and use revenue bonds that's dedicated towards this purpose.
Sabrina, for the purpose of the people who are watching this, can you tell them what TIF, can you explain what the, not explain, explain, but just what those acronyms mean?
So the special services district defines a boundary, and it is limited, and you're dedicating a revenue for that. So when the rating agencies look at it, they say it's generated, that revenue is generated from that particular boundary, and it goes right back to that for a specific purpose. So they take that out of our general property tax evaluation and say, yeah, property taxes are not paying for that, but this is special debt. You can also do an tax increment finance district, where you increase the tax rate on that, on that, on that portion of that and dedicate it back again. The problem with that is that you have to have a debt service coverage as one point two five or one, one point five, meaning for ten million dollars, you actually have to bring in twelve point five million dollars. So ten million dollars of debt, you actually have to bring in revenue of twelve point five, because it's a revenue bond, and they want to see that you have income in there in case there's a stress or a shock to the system and the revenues go down. You have additional money sitting in a reserve somewhere where you can pay that debt service for that year. The advantage of that is that each year it's one point two five or one point five each year, and eventually you can create a bucket, and you can use that coverage if you haven't used it for projects. So that's an advantage, but again, the rates that you have to set will be higher. And in, in this, you also have to look at, do the projects fit the legislation that you're passing? Do they, with stormwater fee, if you look at doing a stormwater fee, you have to make sure that the projects that you're approving are, are legal by stormwater legislation. So in the preliminary look, our focus was on Hague and Pretty Lake, defining the districts. And we're still, this is very, very preliminary, we're still defining the boundaries and the impact on which street, where the water will go, what's going to benefit. So these are very, very rough estimates. And we looked at the real estate tax as a revenue source, dedicated fee as a revenue source, and issuing a 20-year debt, as we normally do. We also looked at 30-year and 40-year debt. We're not showing those. It just means that your, the rates that you'll have to set will be lower, but you pay over a longer period of time. It's sort of like a 15-year mortgage versus a 30-year mortgage. You know, you may pay less now, but then you pay it over a longer period. But because we always issue 20-year debt, we just kept this presentation to 20-year debt. So again, as we refine these numbers and the neighborhood and, and the impact, we'll get, we'll get better estimates. So this chart's a little busy, but we tried to get it in one slide for you. So if you use 10 million dollars as a rule of thumb, if we were going to issue 10 million dollars' worth of debt, and we used this first column as a tax rate increase, if you wanted to do the Hague, which was 60 million, right? 60 million, you'd have to increase our real estate tax just for Hague at five cents, five cents more. Pretty Lake about four cents more. And if you applied those, the Hague and the Pretty Lake, Pretty Lake projects, citywide, it would be half a penny.
That's for 10 million.
For 10 million, for 10 million. It's just a rule of thumb, so you can multiply 10, 20, 30, 40. If you did a dedicated revenue, and we did it based on how we do the stormwater $1 fee, you'd have to increase that fee to 220. Pretty Lake for 79. And then if you did that on a citywide basis, it would be $8. So this is basically the city.
220 per household?
Yes. Per account. We did it based on per account.
For 10 million?
For 10 million.
So 60 million dollars would be?
That's the next slide.
I'm getting to that. So then we broke it down into monthly. So this was, and these are just based on average homeowners, and then annually.
Interesting.
So then if you take it to the Hague and Pretty Lake, the actual cost for the Hague, it's 60, 60 million, you'd have to raise it by 30 cents. And your monthly impact for the homeowners in that, in that district, as we would call it, would be 99 and almost 1,200 a year. Pretty Lake, the same thing, only they just pay about 500 more a year. If you take, if you just take this 110 million dollars, and you said the whole city is now going to pay more, it would cost everybody $98 in five cent increase. So this is the theory of when everybody pays, everybody pays less.
But does everybody benefit? Would the people in Spartan Village benefit?
No.
No. So when you get to 310 million, which is all of the citywide projects, you'd have to raise it by 13.5 cents, almost 14 cents, and everybody pays 275 dollars more a year.
Well, it depends on, too, how you look at it on benefiting, because it gets us projects done faster, so that when other money frees up with public works that could go towards some of the smaller projects that are needed, because these are your big dollar ones that we don't have the revenue to pay for. But it also, I, I think, I have this philosophy, too, that every time a storm comes and you get all those claims, whether it's for cars being damaged in floods or whatever, we end up paying for that because our, all of our insurance goes up, even our car insurance goes up. So once again, we're reducing the amount of risk benefits everybody in the city, because even though my car's never flooded, I'm paying for it on my car insurance, because other people have flooded out.
I, I was also wondering about the impact on assessments. So it would seem that the housing assessments would be higher if the risk of flooding was lower. And that would impact on our revenue also. So do you, have you factored that in at all?
We did in the real estate. We factored in a growth, I believe it was 2.7 next year and.
But that's a growth citywide.
Right.
I'm talking about a house right now that's difficult to sell because it often floods. And if you solve that house's flooding value, the price of that, and that's an argument that the Hague makes regularly, and I'm sure Pretty Lake and, and Spartan Village, all of those would appreciate in assessments much better if the risk of flooding was reduced.
I don't think that we did it for Hague and Pretty Lake because they actually had a decline, but we can take another run at that one. But we did do it for citywide.
They clearly have a decline, and we know why.
So as Sabrina set it up earlier, and that's why she did the first couple of slides, is because we're trying to look at this through a resilience lens, those three prongs, and it's almost like we're trying to fit this into just projects. So just as Ron did, and engineering look, this is a finance look, but if we just do it on the projects, it's not really resilient. You'd have to take into account some other factors. So what Sabrina's doing today, it's a man, medical calculation of the capacity to do projects based on the special districts or citywide. And there are tens of questions that would make this more than just a project finance presentation.
So then if you carry that same premise to the fee, we applied the stormwater $1 fee that we already have, but we did it, you know, for the 60 and the 50 and then the 310, these are the numbers that you'd have to impose. So the Hague, folks in the Hague would have to pay about 1,300 more, Pretty Lake another 400 more a year. And then if you did Hague and Pretty Lake citywide, it would be 87, and citywide for the 310 million would be about 244. So.
So if you did a citywide for the 310, that would be about 20 extra dollars a month?
Correct.
For 10, per 10 million dollars?
No. This is. This is the whole thing now. This is the whole thing.
Oh, okay, okay, all right. Thank you.
When you, when you carve it out, what is the Hague and what is Pretty Lake? Obviously, there are a lot more properties at Pretty Lake, and that would drive this, you know, if you've got a 60 million dollar, 50 million dollar project.
Yeah, there are more properties, and I think their values are also higher than Pretty Lake. Or did I have that reversed?
It has to be.
The Hague has higher values, that there's more.
I understand. It must be more properties. It's a quarter of the.
And for the stormwater fees, do we charge that per, like an apartment building, is it per resident, or is it still per?
They do it based on ERU. I believe that's called equivalent residential unit.
Okay, so for tax reasons, the tax dollars are lower in, in East Ocean because there's less, I mean, there's a lot of multifamily complex, but for stormwater, some of those 20-unit buildings, you know, you're paying per, per unit, so you're not going to have that in the Hague.
It's a third of the project, 20% less.
Pretty Lake is actually valued higher. Pretty Lake in 17, we estimate, has an assessed value of over 2 billion, and Hague is about And then when you do the dedicated fee, the number of ERUs, Pretty Lake has more.
Marcus, what kind of, I mean, are you, feel pretty comfortable that that's a reasonable cost for the, for the Hague and Pretty Lake projects? That that's a good figure? I mean, you?
Yes, Mayor.
I mean, we've been talking about the walls that can be blowed up and all that, such as you're talking about, as opposed to.
And so, Mayor, yes. And again, I'll just go back one more time, that this is addressing a council's request, and it's project-based. And what I would suggest is that, and I know we're saying, Marcus, we can't wait until, you know, 100 years from now, what are we going to do now? But there are more things that we can be doing in addition to these, these projects. The other thing I would say before Sabrina goes to the next slide is that the capital improvement plan that this council approved works. And you've been very good with how you have, if you added projects, you would take projects out. And that's why when you have that five-year look, and you show that she's, we're under the, the targets, it's because the plan works. Council Smigel is correct, municipal projects that you have to do, like schools and courthouses, we can make a better case when we go to the rating agencies and, and we discuss those. What's going to happen next, though, is that whatever projects you choose, because of those limitations, even if you have a source that's going to pay for it, it impacts your internal targets. And I just wanted to say that before you went to that, Sabrina, because even with the fee, what, what we need to do, raising a tax rate is not necessarily what the rating agency, let me say it a different way. You want your assessed values to grow. So you get revenue because of two things, a tax rate and assessed value. So if the assessed values aren't growing, you raise the tax rate and you can get the revenue up. But having your assessed values grow is the most important thing. And that's why we will struggle with raising a tax rate and not having the assessed values grow. And that's where you see some problems with our internal.
Why wouldn't assessed value grow?
Assessed value is the assessed value. So that's, that's something.
But a house is worth more if it's not going to flood.
No, no, no. Over time, and that's what she was saying, over time, but your assessed value for 2017 is going to be your assessed value. And whether you've built a wall or not, you know, maybe over time, your assessed value goes up because you do that, but today, your assessed value is your assessed value.
That, that 20 dollars for citywide that covers all the projects?
Yep.
Doesn't seem bad, Marcus. I mean, I, I mean, I'm just thinking.
So that's.
So you're going to have to help me figure out why that's not a bad, or why that's a, a bad thing, because I see a big but coming.
No, well, I was going to say, the route we would want to go is a revenue bond.
Right.
Because it keeps it out, if we do this, it keeps it out of our GO and our credit ratings. You want to establish a dedicated fee somehow, some way, either at citywide or not. We probably need, I don't know if we need legislation for that or not, but we may need General Assembly action. We'd have to research some more of that. But this is the route you want to go. So I, for 20 dollars, I'm, I can't answer that one.
Well, and there's, there's an opportunity possibly down the road, too, with SIPSA, right? And, you know, without touching on too much of that, but wouldn't that go on, that's the same bill, isn't it? This stormwater fee?
I'm saying that if there's a possible reduction down the road there.
You have tit for tat.
Yeah, tit for tat, we're just, but people are used to paying what they pay now for trash, and we do get frustrated with it, but if there, we know there's a potential for that. To me, you're getting 310 million, and you, you impact the whole city then on projects. You're generating jobs possibly out of this. And there is still a possibility, even though we haven't looked into it, about insurance rates possibly going down, or some kind of discount because we're taking proactive measures so people could still see savings. But I think that if you were to take something like that out to the public, and they saw the scale of, of what projects could be done, that it's actually not bad.
Could you do a blended rate?
Anytime you involve real estate tax, it's going to count against your, your debt ratios.
The fee? I mean, so, I mean, you, I mean, you couldn't charge the Hague a little higher for something like this, and the city, the citywide a little lower?
We'd have to take a look at that. You may have to do several special services districts for that.
But you also mentioned CIP, and at some point, they rotate off.
So.
And that being said, or do, and there's two ways to look at it. At some point, as, as we look at preparing the city five, 10, and 15 years out, at some point, some CIP will rotate off our balance sheet.
Right.
We also can reexamine what may be out in the future and readjust the priority to our CIP, and take that back to the citizens and discuss in town hall meetings where what comes in place of, of things that may not be as significant in CIP, or that can be funded perhaps in other manners.
Our, our CIP is, at this point, very bare bones. There's really, to use the manager's words, there's really nothing really sexy other than public infrastructure.
We pay certain things off in time, don't we?
Well, we do. We just paid off.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
We just paid off Harbor Park.
Okay.
Which opened in 1993, and we just did that this year.
But there are other projects since 93, Sabrina, that rotate off. At some point, that debt rotates out.
Right. Right.
And it could be five years out, it could be 10 years out, it could be 20 years out. Don't plan for tomorrow. So, the question is, if it, when, can you give us a schedule of what rotates out that may open funds up, and then give us a schedule on what's in the future that we can reconsider? And, and that's what I'm saying.
We can do that.
Maybe I wasn't articulate enough when I said about rotating off.
We can do that. Generally, we, we issue for 20 years, so the projects are going to be there for 20 years.
So, let's see what's coming off in the next two years, five years, 20 years out.
And then we added five schools.
But we also, that's a dedicated funding source, though.
It still counts against our ratio.
I understand, but it's a dedicated funding source that we're increased, we increase tax on. I want you to look at it and see if there's any manner it can be done with what is currently being paid off and comes off our books.
You have one more chart, because we're going to have to get upstairs.
Yeah, let me ask you this, though. Would all households be impacted by this if you went citywide?
Yes.
What about, what about, okay. But it still might flood, you know, over on Charlotte Street. It still might flood, you know, on Robin Hood Road.
In Townwood, all right.
Yeah, so, unless, you know, I would, if I were somebody who was paying a bill like that, I would be, I'd kind of fret, you know, paying an additional fee if I were not going to be relieved. One of the things I said a couple of weeks ago, and, and I know we're not going to do this, I don't think we can try to do it next budget, but I think we need to look internally and see how much municipal waste. Yeah. HRT was, was on that board. They were anticipating a fare increase, but they held it for a year and looked inside and realized they were wasting so much money. So, I think we really need to look at everything that we're doing, you know, in public works and utilities in particular, because they're the budgets that's going to, you know, impact or fund this, these type things. And first of all, and not, not hold up the projects, but find out how much we are wasting, you know, in this city. You know, I really don't believe that citizens are getting their money's worth already. The people on Chesapeake Boulevard and over in Oakwood, you know, this time they missed trash collection twice, but their bills were not reduced. So, we need to make sure before we start talking about giving additional fees and fee structures, that we're giving our citizens what they are paying for already and that how much money we are actually wasting. And I know what a billion-dollar budget, I know we are, I'm not going to say it like my dad would say, but we wasted money.
Sabrina, that's a 20-year bond for 20 bucks?
Correct.
If it was 30 years, it would be...
It would be a little bit lower, but you'd pay it longer.
I know that, I understand that. Four dollars or five dollars?
Oh, what do I do with it?
Can we, like, I mean, I know we're running out of time. This is something we really need to...
And I would like to add too, can we look at what, what doing this, how doing this ourselves would impact our ability to get federal funds? Is the federal government going to say, oh, they're off the list because they're doing it themselves, we don't have to worry about them anymore, let's go on and spend that money with some other locality that is not, who's not, you know, doing it themselves?
The other side is, if we got them to help us...
Well, absolutely, we already want to get them to help it.
That's the other side. I prefer to say...
Yeah, well, we, we are, we were looking at this as an alternative to if they take 100 years, but if we do this, then does that give them the green light to say, never mind?
The way the federal government, I mean, we have to, we can't afford to just put it off.
So, we're going to come back to this at the next meeting, because I want to hear where we're going next, or what you recommend.